For the record, I will do a roll call to verify which commission members are participating this evening. I see Commissioner Adams, I see Commissioner Ellis, I see Commissioner Lawler and myself. The other members are all excused. We are now at Commission Communications. Commissioners, does anybody have anything they'd like to say? Okay, we are now at Staff Communications. Staff, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Good evening, Commissioners. Anis Latinsky, Planning Division Manager in the Community Development Department of the City of Beaverton. I do have one communication to share. This is at the request of our colleagues in the Transportation Planning Division. As part of the Transportation System Plan Update, there is going to be a, um, an event held to kind of kick off the community engagement for that, um, for that project. The date of this visioning workshop for the Transportation System Plan is Saturday, October 19th, at the main branch of the Beaverton Library. In the morning, um, there will be a visioning workshop in English, and the afternoon, there will be one that is facilitated in Spanish. And, uh, the, the facilitators will lead participants through, uh, what sounds like a really fun model building activity to build out how ideal streets would look and feel to them. Um, they're going to be hands-on and family-friendly, and the insights gathered at this event will feed into development of the vision and the goals for the comprehensive update for Beaverton's Transportation System Plan. So if you have any, um, interest in questions about that, there is a Transportation System Plan Project Update on the city website where you can get more information. But again, the, the time and place is, um, is Saturday on October 19th at the Beaverton City Library. And I have no further staff comments to make.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda for tonight is the application for LU 32023-00557, Ash Creek Play School case numbers, case file numbers, LU 32023-00555 and DR 12024-0009. The applicant has the burden of proving that the applications are consistent with the Beaverton Development Code, Comprehensive Plan, and any applicable Beaverton Code provision. The criteria that must be addressed in hearing are Development Code sections 40.03.1, the Facility Review Committee, 40.15.15.4.c, major modification of conditional use, 40.20.15.1.c, Designer View Compliance Letter. Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed toward these approval criteria or other criteria in the Comprehensive Plan or Development Code that the speaker believes to apply to the application. Failure three is an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to allow the Planning Commission and other interested parties an opportunity to respond to the issue may preclude an appeal to Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. Anyone who submits written statements or gives oral testimony as standing to appeal this decision. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to the proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the city to respond to the, to the issue may preclude an action for damages in certain court. State and local law require commissioners to make certain disclosures. To these ends, the following questions will be asked. Does any commissioner have a potential or actual conflict of interest? Ex parte contact or site visits to declare. Commissioner Adams?
I do not.
Commissioner Ellis?
Um, I will disclose, I live just shy of a couple blocks from the subject location. Drive and walk by it almost every day. And, uh, my family, uh, my kids have, have played at the, um, playground in question often and, and still do. There's lots of playgrounds, there's lots of parks. I, I don't believe it's a conflict of interest or that I am biased in any way. Uh, but I did want to, uh, disclose a potential ex parte contact.
Thank you. Commissioner Lawler?
Um, I have no contacts, or, um, I'm sorry, ex parte contacts or conflicts. I did, uh, conduct a site visit today, um, driving around the neighborhood and walking the site, but that, did not encounter anyone, and nothing I learned at the site visit will, um, add to what's already in the record.
Okay, I don't have any potential conflicts of interest, ex parte contacts. I am familiar with the site from previous hearings we've had, and that's it for me. Does any member of the audience wish to question a commissioner about ex parte contacts or site visits or challenge the right of any commissioner to participate in the hearing? Seeing none, let the record show no response. The order of the public hearing tonight will be as follows. First, city staff will give a presentation followed by commissioners' questions. Second, the applicant will be given 20 minutes for presentation followed by the commissioners' questions of the applicant. Then, members of the public in support of the application can speak for up to five minutes each. Then, members of the public opposed to the application can speak for up to five minutes each. Members of the public who are neither in support nor opposed will then have five minutes to speak. After public testimony, the applicant will have five minutes for rebuttal. Planning Commission will then hear any final comments from staff. We'll now begin with staff presentations.
Thank you, Vice Chair Winter. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Steve Regner, Senior Planner with the City of Beaverton. Uh, the application before you tonight is case file LU 3, uh, 2023-00557, Ash Creek Play School, case file CU 3, 2023-00555, and DR 1, 2024-00090. The application before you tonight consists generally of the expansion of an existing childcare facility as well as the retroactive permitting of a play area, um, expanded in the past. Um, there are two applications before you tonight. There is a major modification of the conditional use permit. Um, this is where the applicant is seeking to increase the enrollment of the childcare facility from the permitted 20 children to a requested 60 children, as well as, uh, from two staff to 10 staff. Additionally, there is the Designer View Compliance Letter, and that is intended, uh, to address the, um, expansion of the play area done previously without permits. The intent is to, uh, the request is to retroactively approve and acknowledge those improvements. Staff would like to draw commission's attention to six supplemental memos. Um, one, uh, dated October 2nd, two dated October 8th, and three dated October 9th. Planning Commission's thinking three, yes, three, uh, because one was just uploaded, or might still actually be uploaded as we speak. We got some additional, uh, information, uh, from the applicant, so that is being uploaded, submitted to the record. Uh, nothing terribly of substance, more technicality about property owner, uh, signatures. I'll explain that a little bit more, uh, down the road, but just wanted to drive everyone's attention to the six supplemental ones that we have this evening. So, speaking about the project, uh, this is at Murray Hills Christian Church, address 15050 Southwest Weir Road. Um, the church campus as a whole is just under four acres. It is in the neighbor, southwest neighborhood, and it is in the residential mixed B zone. Uh, previously before the Housing Options Project, we did the rezone, it was the R5 zone. Um, I just raised that to make it clear that whether it was the R5 zone when previous approvals happened or in the R and B zone now, uses that are conditionally permitted and outright permitted have not changed. So, a church in the R5 and R and B zones, both conditionally permitted. A childcare facility, the same, conditionally permitted, whether it's the old zone or the new zone. So that really doesn't have an effect, but I just wanted to make that clear. Uh, here is a diagram of the site layout. Weir Road is to the north, just out of the drawing. Southwest 151st Place is in the northwest, and that road is the main vehicle access to the site. Uh, there is actually also emergency vehicle access to the south along 149th Terrace, uh, but that is typically closed with a chain run across two poles, so that is not a, um, standard vehicle access point. Um, the drawing's a little bit hard to see in black and white, so I've added a little bit of color here. The, uh, church itself is the area in red. Um, the floor area, all told, between the two stories and the basement, um, is approximately 23 and a half thousand square feet. Um, the play area is around 8,500 square feet in its current formation. A little bit of background on the site itself, um, the site was approved, uh, conditional use permit approval for a church in 1988. In 1994, a original childcare facility was approved through conditional use permit, and that limited, um, the facility to 20 students and two staff. And this is the land use application, yep, the applicant is requesting be modified through this conditional use modification permit tonight. Uh, in the year 2000, there was a, um, approval for the expansion of the church. I will note that this was for the church only, and there was no request and no analysis regarding the childcare facility. Um, the rules for that childcare facility were being the same, and was not impacted, uh, by the 2000 approval. As I mentioned, um, in and around 2011, give or take, uh, the play area was expanded without permits. Um, and so the Designer View application is to retroactively approve that expansion. I say 2011 thereabouts, um, because we don't actually know the specific date. One of the, um, features of, of volunteer-run churches is that they have leadership turnover, and so we are relying on the purchase records of when the new play structures were fit, were purchased, and that was in 2011. So we are concluding that the playground improvements probably happened in or around that time. So, we believe it happened 13, 14 years ago there. So, talking about the actual major modification of the conditional use, um, again, it is, uh, requesting to increase the school enrollment from 20 to 60 children and two staff to 10 staff. Uh, staff has provided their analysis as to why the proposal meets the approval criteria. Um, but a couple of highlights, the site has functioned since 1994 as a childcare facility. Um, as far as noise impacts, the limited hours of childcare facility, it's only from, I want to say, around eight o'clock to one o'clock, so mostly just in the morning and very early afternoon, does effort to limit the noise impacts of the childcare facility on the surrounding neighbors. Um, and just to note, the increase in staff is to create a better, uh, child-to-staff ratio reflecting, um, current best practices. That's why you see that bigger jump, uh, in staff compared to the jump in students. Um, and very quickly on the Designer View Compliance Letter, um, this is, um, a very, um, common approach to how, um, uh, an accessory use, um, is expanded on a conditionally permitted site. Um, there are provisions in our Development Code that discuss what happens when an accessory use or incidental use, um, to a main use, um, how it can be modified. Um, in this case, we have the expansion of a play area. Uh, we treat it as, you know, this, essentially, we have these new elements going in, landscaping is changing, and that is the trigger for Designer View Compliance Letter. So that is why, um, staff has identified that this is the appropriate mechanism to retroactively permit Designer View Compliance Letter. Uh, just to give the commission a little bit of scale, it sounds like most people have, are familiar with the site. Uh, but I just provided a couple of distances to give an idea of how close this, uh, play area is to neighboring, um, neighboring residential, um, lots. Um, to the west, the closest, uh, is approximately 70 feet to the west. Um, there's a different lot, although you can't see the line on the drawing, it's about 135 feet, um, at its closest point, and about 140 feet to the south. So, um, this is just to give, um, commission a little bit of context and scale, um, no more than that. Oh, and there's the colors as well, reference. Staff wants to acknowledge that considerable public testimony has been provided on, um, on this application. Um, staff has no intention of going through and talking about every single piece of public testimony. Uh, staff has done that through the written record, both through the staff report and the, um, supplemental memos provided, um, in the past week or so, including today. Uh, we'll just highlight a couple of items, just so, um, commission is aware. Um, one of the big concerns related is, is related to noise, the applicability of the noise ordinance. Um, staff has addressed, um, why, um, we are recommending approval and why we think it meets approval criteria. Um, but noise was a common concern expressed by, uh, by members of the public. Um, there were assertions that the play area should require its own conditional use permit. Um, we have addressed why, um, staff thinks that that is, uh, not the, uh, correct application of the code. Um, in written record, as I've mentioned, um, the, uh, the fact that it is a, um, accessory and incidental use to the primary church means that it is, um, outright permitted, um, under the provisions of, of 60/50. Uh, there have been assertions that the neighborhood meeting requirements were not met. Um, staff has provided in our written notes why, uh, staff believe that the requirements of the neighborhood meeting were in fact met. Um, and finally, there are questions, there were questions raised about property owner signature and proper authorization to sign that. Um, very quickly, this is one of the issues I wanted to raise about coming memos. Um, in the original, um, documents, sorry, that's original, in the documents, um, provided to the Planning Commission, meaning the actual application forms, um, it looks like there was a digital hiccup and the, uh, signature, um, fields went blank. Um, so, in a memo provided earlier today, uh, staff provided, um, a, actually, the original from last year application that had physical, physical signatures on there. So, exhibit 3.8 in a memo today provides that physical, uh, signature, um, kind of issue or resolving that issue. And the second problem identified was that there was no, um, written explanation or, excuse me, express written authorization from the church that the person who signed, um, the application form actually had the authorization, authorization to do that. Uh, that letter was provided to staff, um, at just around the start of this meeting. Um, so that letter, uh, from Murray Hills Christian Church, um, expressly authorizing signature rights, um, for the person who signed the form is provided by that letter, and that is the, um, that is the extent of the memo, um, provided, uh, to Planning Commission in the last five minutes or so. So, not, not a ton of substance on that, but definitely checking, um, a technical box to make sure, um, that proper, um, owner authorization has been provided for these. Well, being said, staff recommends approval of LU 3, 2023-00557, Ash Creek Play School. Uh, this concludes staff's presentation, and we are happy to answer any questions, uh, that the commission may have.
Thank you, Mr. Regner. Um, Commissioners, does anybody have any questions for Mr. Regner? Seeing none? Okay, we're moving up, oh, sorry, excuse me, Commissioner Lawler has a question.
I can't find my little hand raised thingy, so I'm just physically gonna raise my hand. Um, I have a question, lots of testimony here from neighbors, obviously. Um, a probe, um, what are our allowed parameters with respect to considering some of the, uh, neighborhood testimony? For example, um, do we have, is it under our authority? Um, because there's been a lot of discussion about whether this is a public ground or whether this is a playground that's, the, um, the, the broader noise impacts could result if this were a, a public playground after hours versus limited to the school hours. So, do we have the authority, and I see our city attorney has popped up, uh, to limit the, uh, use of that playground? That is a condition of approval, that the playground is limited?
Commissioner, Commissioners?
Preschool users.
Yeah, Commissioner Lawler, you're, you're kind of laggy, I think. Is that just, is that me, or?
Yeah, I was just about to ask if, um, if I'm the only one, but Commissioner Lawler, you're, you kind of broke up quite a bit. It was hard to.
Oh, hmm. Tell you what, let me turn off my video and I'll a- ask that question. Sorry about that, but, um. Okay, so let's try this. Um, is this better?
Yes.
Yes, it is.
All right. Um, my question was, what is our authority as planning commissioners to consider the fact that, um, we've had a lot of testimony from the neighbors about the noise impacts? And, um, some of that testimony has been directed to, um, an assertion that some of the, the playground has been used by, by the public. And so therefore extending the hours of, um, activity at the site. And so my question is, do we have the authority as planning commissioners reviewing this application to, um, effectively, uh, request a condition to limit the use of the playground area to the play school only?
So, Commissioners, if I may respond, Robin McIntyre, Assistant City Attorney. Uh, you, you know, it, it is private property, and there's no requirement that the pit playground be, uh, open to the public. Certainly is, uh, a condition that the Planning Commission can impose, uh, after, after hearing all the testimony. And, you know, of course, keep in mind that, you know, the applicant may also have, uh, comments to that as well. Does that answer the question?
Yes, thank you. That was my first question. Second question, um, Kim, um, the, um, 1994 approval listed a very specific condition about, uh, establishing the parameters of the, uh, the play, the, uh, play school. You know, 20 students, two staff. I noticed this, um, the conditions of approval associated with this staff report did not have a similar restriction. Is, uh, is that something of a parameter that the Planning Commission could, um, similarly impose on this use? Because, and I say that, um, to a certain extent, because there was kind of this, um, expansion in 2011 that seems to be, uh, the source of some of the, uh, negative impacts from the neighbors or comments from the neighbors. So, I was just thinking, Kim, is that something within our authority to limit the, uh, to have a condition of approval expressly limiting the number of students and staff?
It, it's certainly within the power of Planning Commission to assign that condition of approval. Uh, there, there is a reason why staff elected not to be that explicit, and for the most part, that's more best practice these days. It is somewhat inherent in the record, um, describing what it is they are allowed to do and not do. Um, the staff report as well as the narrative, um, from the applicant make it very clear that what they're asking for is 60 students and 10 staff. Um, and it's, it's one of those things where, you know, a, a condition of approval typically is, um, placed when there is some identified deficiency in the proposal. Where we say, yeah, you're 90% of the way there, but that 10%, we need to put a condition so you get to, get all the way there. Um, so in this case, uh, we as staff do not identify in that need because we think, or we, we believe that, uh, that those limitations are very clearly described in the staff report. If it would make the Planning Commission more comfortable with that, it's something certainly that you can do. Uh, but that's just a little bit of context, is why staff elected not to include that very explicit condition in the approvals because it's, it's reflected inherently, um, included in, in the record.
Okay, thank you. Fair enough.
Thank you.
That's it.
Thank you, Commissioner Lawler. Any other Commissioners' comments? Okay, seeing none. Now is the time for the app.
Sorry, Chair Winter, apologies. Um, just to follow on maybe a little bit from, uh, Commissioner Lawler's question. The, uh, the question about potentially having a new, um, uh, a new conditional use around either the, the hours of the play area related to the noise or, or controlling from the noise. Question for staff, is there precedent, um, in the Beaverton area where, where we have put conditions on non-public, uh, lands, like obviously schools and THP are, you know, like those are different, but other churches or, or other places that may have playgrounds or, you know, things that are publicly accessible? Um, have there been conditions put on those places that required them to, to make them inaccessible after a certain time in response to neighborhood concerns?
Uh, Commissioner Ellis, that's an excellent question. I am, I'm searching my brain trying to think of an example. Um, I, I would invite our other staff, particularly current Planning Manager Janet Fox and Planning Director Anis Latinsky. If they can think of an example in Beaverton, I would welcome them to step up as I buy myself time and try and think of an example. Um, the, the, the short answer is, um, that, you know, we can't think of one right now. However, that does not mean that the Planning Commission then does not have the authority to apply such a condition of approval. I think, I think the, the biggest takeaway here is that the Planning Commission does have relatively broad discretion as to conditions of approval. Um, they see as appropriate to affirm that a project does meet the approval criteria.
Gotcha. Yeah, I, I think thinking along those lines, I'm, I'm, I'm potentially less comfortable with asking for a condition related to hours of access or some, or requiring a property owner to, to grant or not grant access a- and, and giving them that requirement, uh, with how they use their property versus symptomatically, if it's the noise, asking for noise abatement of some kind, what, you know, planting whatever.
Yeah, sorry, I just, I'm gonna jump in here because I just want to remind the commission that right now is the, is a really good time to ask questions of staff, but deliberating about what action the Planning Commission may decide to take and the pros and cons and, and the rationale. That actually should happen later after the hearing is closed. So, that sometimes it's a subtle distinction. That actually should happen later after the hearing is closed. So that sometimes it's a subtle distinction. Um, but I would just encourage commissioners to ask all of the questions that they have, both of staff and of the applicants after the applicant's presentation. Or indeed of folks who are testifying tonight from the public. Um, but that those deliberations about what the action would be, would be, would be at a different point in time later in the, later in the proceedings.
Yeah, that's fair. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that clarification, Mrs. Slitinsky. Mr. Adams, you're the only one that hasn't made any comments before I go on. Would you like to add something?
Uh, yeah, I think, yeah, I think it's a real gray area. We start determining what is. Acceptable and not acceptable. I think it's more along the lines of what is reasonable. I think it's reasonable if children are outside playing, there's going to be. Some excessive noise, I would say. That depends on who's hearing it and.
I'm not trying to prevent you from having your say, but we need to have the questions directed at staff indications.
Yeah, so staff, my question to you, Stephen, would be um, is there, has there been any kind of? Testing or reason to even think of testing for sound and noise levels at the park and the preschool?
So there uh, there has not been discussion with the applicant um, re- requiring a noise study is, is very uncommon. Um, especially when it is daytime noise. Um, if this is a situation and when it's time for deliberation, certainly. Um, US commissioners can have that conversation. Um, I will just offer, if there is unease about the, the lack of knowledge about how much noise there truly is. And the commission believes that maybe a sound study is warranted, that is certainly something that, that can be discussed. I will just say that that is not something that we have discussed with the applicant. And, and frankly, it's not, it's not a terribly common technical report um that is uh required by city staff of, of an applicant. But every project is different, so um, don't, don't wanna completely cross that out, but it's, it's not terribly common.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Now, the applicant has twenty minutes to make a presentation. Please begin by introducing yourself. Say your names and addresses for the record. With the applicants represented.
Okay, um, I guess I'll jump in and introduce myself. My name is Jenna Hori and my address, I guess, is eight one three zero Southwest one forty seventh Terrace. We have two other members of the applicant team on the call.
Hi folks, my name is Daniel Hauser. Uh, I reside at one nine six nine six Southwest Murphy Street. Um, and I am also going to be joining in the applicant presentation.
My name is Kevin Soon. Um, I represent Murray Hills Christian Church at one five zero five zero Southwest Weir Road. And I will be part of the applicant presentation as well.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Kevin, would you like to kick us off?
Is anybody gonna speak?
Yeah.
Kevin, are you ready to, to share what you had prepared?
Yes, my, my, hopefully my connection lasts here. Uh, I'm in a football press box in a, in a high school football stadium, so wish me luck. Okay. Uh, good evening. My name is Kevin Soon. I'm the board chair of Murray Hills Christian Church located at one five zero, one five zero five zero Southwest Weir Road. The Christian Church Disciples of Christ has a long tradition of supporting education. As part of the Stone Campbell Movement, we have established seventy one colleges, universities and graduate schools throughout America. That value not only lives in the halls of academia, but in the preschool, elementary and high school classrooms of our congregation. Congregations. Murray Hills Christian Church also has a local legacy of supporting pre-kindergarten and childcare services. Prior to our moving to our location on Weir Road, we existed as Cedar Hills Christian Church. There we hosted pre-K for many years. And when the Cedar Hills Christian Church moved to our current location on Weir Road, we hosted a small Montessori school. That legacy of welcoming children is intrinsic to the practice of our faith. When the disciples of Jesus prevented families from bringing their children to him for blessing, Jesus said, let the little children come to me. Do not hinder them, for such, for to such belongs the kingdom of heaven. When Ash Creek approached MHCC several years ago to request a site where they could provide a cooperative play school for young children, we were happy to welcome them in. In our collective effort to nurture the early childhood development of our community, Murray Hills Christian Church has committed to continuing this ministry hand in hand with Ash Creek. We would love to continue welcoming more children to our space to learn, play and grow. The conditional use permit application before you today is practical and needed expansion to the uses of our church. We wholly support the application and Ash Creek's leadership and guidance through this process. We are also supportive of the design review letter, which addresses our accidental expansion of the playground. The volunteers at our church fourteen years ago who expanded the playground and guided that process were trying to help the congregation and community. They had no idea about permitting being required, since the play structure went into a similar place as the previous play structure what had been. The playground equipment company told the church that most playgrounds do not get permits. It was an honest mistake by well-intentioned community members. We're trying to make it right by removing invasive plants and planting new native plants as requested by Clean Water Services. Later this ye- this year, Ash Creek, MHCC and local scout troops will be working together to update trees and other ground coverage per CWS. Murray Hills' vision is to demonstrate true community and our mission is to serve from our doorstops to the ends of the earth. That is why we welcome and partner with local organizations, including scout troops, girls, girls, boy scout troops, girl scout troops. Two AA groups, an ESL group, a Hispanic congregation, a food pantry and other community service institutions. And Ash Creek School for the betterment of our city and larger world. MHCC sees itself as a member of our community and neighborhood, a welcoming space for people throughout our community to be accepted and loved, to grow and learn. This is exactly how Ash Creek also sees itself. The alignment on values is significant and longstanding, and we're happy to continue our support of Ash Creek. We would ask the planning committee's support of this conditional use permit modification and design review letter. Thank you.
Right. Um, thank you so much, Kevin, for those um, for speaking for us tonight, for those kind words. Um, guess I'll continue. Um. So I, my name is Jenna Hori. As I said, I'm one of the founding board members of Ash Creek Play School um from when we started back in twenty fifteen. Um, in twenty fourteen, I enrolled my oldest daughter um in a parent cooperative preschool in Tiger. And I found that to be a, a great experience at the time. Um, but frankly, the only downside was it was farther than I wanted to drive for a three-hour part-time preschool class. Um, I really connected with one of the teachers there who just talked about wanting to change her schedule for the next year. And um, somehow we came up with this crazy plan to start our own preschool in this neighborhood in Beaverton. We found a few other parents that were interested in joining us. Um, and so we just dove right in. Um, and when we found Murray Hills Christian Church as a potential location, the trustees there. Um, told us that there had formerly been a preschool in the building, so we understood that there was some precedent. Um, but at the time, we didn't know anything about the specific terms of the nineteen ninety four CUP. Uh, that never came up in discussions about our original lease. I don't think the trustees that were involved at that, that time were really aware. Um, and none of this was, none of us knew that this was something that we should even ask about. Uh, we also didn't know the history of the building expansion from two thousand one and the subsequent, subsequent playground area expansion that happened in twenty ten or twenty eleven. Uh, which was before Ash Creek was even founded. We've really only learned about the previous site work just through this application um process. So back then, we started with three board members and one teacher. We were really learning as we went to figure out the business side of things, including payroll, accounting, tax reporting. Um, and what was required from the various like regulatory bodies. Um, I got a crash course in accounting and QuickBooks, workers comp requirements and all that fun stuff. So we applied for and received five oh one C three tax exemption status from the IRS. Um, which was a requirement by the church to be able to um operate out of their building. And something we, we, we wanted to pursue anyway, but we've had that continuously um. That we've had that status continuously since we started in twenty fifteen. That's something that's easily verifiable um in their online database. If there's, you know, questions have been raised about that status. It's, it's easily searchable. Um, they have a lookup tool, so anyway, um, next slide, please, Daniel. So we, we've talked about how Ash Creek is a parent cooperative preschool. Um, that's one in which a parent or other caregiver uh is required to participate as part of the program. So there's typically a lead teacher who is a trained educator and employee of the school. And then a daily rotation of parents or other family members serve as assistant teachers in the classroom. So that makes for a very meaningful family experience and it creates a close-knit community at the school. So that high level of participation in the program obviously isn't for everyone, but for the families that do want that type of involvement. It's a really great program to have available in our community. Um, and as part of the family commitments, the parents who participate um in volunteering, they go through training on classroom expectations and behavior. We provide ongoing parent education at our meetings um, at uh quarterly meetings throughout the year. Parents also fulfill other duties to help run the school. So everyone has an assigned role that can vary from laundry duty um to serving as a treasurer and handing, handling school fin- finances. So everyone has a role as the parents all pitch in together and, and run the school. Um, and we joined something called Parent Child Preschool Organization. So that's a regional organization that provides um guidance to preschool programs like us. It basically helps parent volunteer run schools um like ours, you know, not miss, not miss anything. Um, you know, make sure we're providing all the necessary business functions and important things like that. Um, and stay aware of the, you know, changing rules from the Department of Education. So we're a member of that organization that's really helpful um to. The writing guidance for all kinds of things like that. They provide guidance, you know, on running background checks for volunteers, salary reviews and safety requirements and stuff like that. So parent cooperative preschools are a somewhat unique and specialized type of preschool structure. So over the years, um, there's been a lot of changes in regulations, particularly during COVID. Um, and we've always tried to stay up to date with how um programs like ours should classify themselves. And uh PCPO has really helped us stay on top of those things. So um, see, my oldest child was three when I helped start Ash Creek, so I did my um parent teaching shifts. With the, my second child along for the ride at the time, like as a baby in a baby carrier, it was just such a really. Meaningful experience for me. I'll say that the school has kind of evolved, our policies about siblings, uh attending class time. Kind of evolved as our uh first batch of families grew, including mine. Can you, next, next slide, Daniel? So uh, yeah, back when we were starting out and looking for possible locations, we found this site at Murray Hills. And it seemed like the perfect spot because it was halfway between two nearby existing preschools. So one are uh specifically co-op preschools, so Tiger Play School and Cedar Hills. This was kind of the halfway point, so we thought it was like a great location to add another co-op. Um, it seemed perfect. I'll say one of my proudest and most impactful moments of as a, as someone that served as the president of the board for several years. I don't know if it was four or five, but I was, I was very involved in running the school for five years. So a meaningful moment uh for me was at one of the end of the year celebrations. A parent was telling me how grateful he was that their family had found Ash Creek because it was such a good experience, not just for his daughter, but for his wife. Uh, because doing her classroom volunteer shifts helped her gain confidence and practice her English skills. They were new to the country at the time. Um, and we have had several families of uh. Different backgrounds, English language learners find Ash Creek because their parents were taking English language classes in the building and had seen our school advertise. Um, so that really connected with me. I like the fact that the co-op model is something that the whole family experiences, not just the students. Um, being in the classroom and learning from the teacher and watching other parents um that I respected interact with their kids. Really helped me grow in my parenting and taught me, you know, to be more patient. Um, and just had all kinds of benefits. It really, I really feel like it helped me over the years and it's been really meaningful to see how it. Um, has benefited other parents as well as um the kids that come through the program. Okay, uh, next slide, please, Daniel. Uh, I wanted to just kind of talk a little bit about how this process has been for us, this, this application. So I mentioned earlier that there, you know, we, during this application process, we kind of found out about the playground expansion. And that really added a lot of complexity to what we thought would be a very simple application. We thought this would be a very straightforward application to increase enrollment. Um, after some initial review uh and including uh. Comments and dis- discussions in the neighborhood meeting, we just, we learned about this playground expansion being done without the permit. Um, and learned about the design review compliance letter requirement and figured out that. Having to seek that retroactive approval for this work that was done before the school even existed would become a part of this process. So we had a lot of discussions with the church trustees to try to learn about that previous work. So that was kind of a difficult part of this, trying to do some research and figure that out. As it has been alluded to before in this meeting, you know, the, the church as well has turnover of the trustees and. And it wasn't, you know, the most accessible record keeping to find this information and just the history of exactly what had been done. So that made it a little bit difficult to document it and seek approval because we were having a hard time determining like the specifics um of the changes. So we've kind of tried to research through photos um and the purchase records ultimately, that was helpful too. So it's been um. Difficult and more complex than we anticipated. So I, go ahead, Daniel, move forward one please. So recently, because of this, we learned, because of um. The design review compliance layer process, we learned that we needed to revise the site assessment we had submitted to Clean Water Services. So that was kind of one of the last minute changes, or not last minute, but that was kind of a recent um. Part of this and added complexity to go back and try to uh have them review the work from twenty ten or twenty eleven. So we've had to navigate many recent battles, respond to many questions and concerns. Um, I do want to state that I really deeply sympathize with anyone who feels impacted by the presence of this school and any noise generated by it. Um, but I believe on the whole, the presence of this preschool and the playground that it utilizes are things that really add to the livability of this neighborhood. I think it's a very positive benefit. Um, the land use application that we are here to discuss is to expand the enrollment at this existing preschool. And that's really the only thing um that we're asking for in our application. But the bulk of the documentation has been focused on the playground construction from twenty ten or twenty eleven. Um, which was done before the school has even, you know, existed. That's been in place for a long time. Um, so we're simply just trying to take on the burden of, of documenting that um process. But it's all, it's been long completed um and we're not proposing any. Changes currently in our plan, so that's, that's all for me. I'll turn it over to Daniel.
Thank you, Jenna, and good evening, commissioners, chair winner and planning commissioners. My name is Daniel Hauser. And I'm the board treasurer of Ash Creek Play School. I have two children who attend Ash Creek who, if we're lucky, won't make any surprise appearances. Some of you may see this in your everyday life, the neighbor, friend or coworker who struggles to find affordable, high-quality childcare in Beaverton. And that experience is backed up by the data. Washington County is a childcare desert for kids zero to five. These maps show the most recently available data for zero to two and for three to five-year-olds. Both age groups are served by Ash Creek and when they're combined, Washington County fits into the desert category. Meaning there's only one slot available for every three kids in that age group. There are significant shortages for enrollment slots in general, let alone for affordable, high-quality experiences like Ash Creek provides today. I'm not aware of clear estimates for the city of Beaverton in particular, but here are two quotes highlighting perspectives from community leaders. First, Mayor Beatty highlights how she's prioritizing addressing the need for childcare in Beaverton. And second, we have a local leader focused on regional workforce development, clearly noting the depth of impact recovering from the pandemic has left preschools and childcare facilities in. It's worth remembering that childcare is the work that enables other work. If you have a young child and nowhere to take them, you can't keep a job. And Beaverton's economic vitality depends on childcare. Taken together, I hope these quotes and the prior data make it clear that our community needs the preschool and childcare slots provided. Taken together, I hope these quotes and the prior data make it clear that our community needs the preschool and childcare slots provided by Ash Creek. In nineteen ninety-four, it might have been perfectly acceptable to have one teacher managing ten two year olds. However, requirements today published by the Oregon Department of Early Learning and Care require licensed facilities to have a ratio of no more than five students to one teacher from two to three years old. At Ash Creek, we strive to provide an even better experience for our students. And if you include parent volunteers, stick to a ratio of three to one for our two to three year old class. We never get close to a ten student per teacher ratio in any of our age groups. And for Ash Creek to work financially as a nonprofit with affordable tuition and low ratios. We need more classes to share the indirect and business costs, which is part of the reason we need to expand to be able to thrive. Currently, in order to comply with the existing conditional use permit, we have no more than twenty children, children attending Ash Creek at Murray Hills Christian Church. Five days a week from nine to one. We also have our Azalea class who have unfortunately been exiled to Conestoga during this process, who have eleven kids enrolled. Our current ideal maximum enrollment would be to bring back the Azalea ca- class back into the Ash Creek fold. And so we would have three classes uh in place as soon as we're able to if this permit process is approved. And we're grateful that the city of Beaverton Planning Staff have agreed with many of the claims that we have about our approval criteria. Uh, related to the conditional use permit, major modification, and the design review letter. Part of the approval criteria is is that we align with the city of Beaverton's comprehensive plan. And to highlight a few key ways, we align with the major themes in the plan. First is livability. Explicitly noted in the definition of livability in the comprehensive plan is educational opportunity and economic prosperity. Educating and engaging our next generation in a school is exactly the kind of land you envisioned in this plan and is an obvious fit. A thriving economy depends on parents being able to work, and that means our children, who are not yet old enough to attend a public school, need somewhere safe and nurturing to be. Next, we have equity. The Ash Creek Play School is a community, a family of caregivers and children bonded together to maximize the joy and potential of everyone involved. Scholarships make up a notable share of the school's budget, and our tuition is lower than many other early education providers in the region. We also have a social justice parenting group where Ash Creek parents build knowledge and skills to realize an equitable future for everyone in our community. Next week's topic's neurodiversity. Next is sustainability. Providing an option embedded within our neighborhood is crucial to reduce climate impacts from commuting long distances to early education in other cities. Furthermore, the Ash Creek Place will teach us about nature through gardening and outdoor play. I think Jenna had a picture of of our garden up earlier, as well as recycling and other crucial concepts for children to be introduced to early in their journey. Finally, resiliency. Students at Ash Creek learn about natural disasters and learn how to prepare for them. For many students, this will be their first time learning about fire drills, earthquakes, and other disasters that will require them to be resilient and part of a family fighting for survival. And these are just the big themes, right? There are numerous other consistencies too in in the large comprehensive plan document. I'll just note two other examples. Uh, goal three point eight point one calls for complete and livable neighborhoods. Including the integration of parks and schools in the neighborhoods in locations where safe and where foot and bike connections are convenient and Ash Creek meets both of those requirements. Goal ten point two calls for access to safe and convenient opportunities for recreation and physical activity throughout the community. Including making playgrounds and schools integrated and accessible to promote health and connectedness. There's little doubt that providing a playground and active outdoor activities for families in the neighborhood and attending the school achieves the same. So as Kevin, Jenna, and I have made clear, Beaverton and our neighborhood need accessible, affordable, high quality preschool options, and Ash Creek is delivering those services today. Being able to expand modestly to meet our community's growing needs for these services is a rational step and is done with careful considered consideration of mitigating any perceived impacts on surrounding households. We'd appreciate the planning commission approve our design review letter and major magic modification of our conditional use permit applications. And with that, I believe the applicant testimony is complete. Thank you, commissioners. We're happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Ash Creek. Um, commissioners, does anybody have any questions about the proposed application? Uh, certainly expected this something after the challenge we had getting started.
Are you calling on me?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, should I? Let me shut off my video, video. Okay, let's try this. Thank you for your presentation. Appreciate that. Um, and I and I uh thank you for the uh the context and the uh. And the hard work put in by, it sounds like the parents of the uh play school. I have a question. There was um a reference, and I'm sorry, I don't remember exactly where I picked this up. About um some noise mitigation measures that you may be contemplating is. Um, is that a fact? And if so, maybe could you elaborate? For the for the playground, I should say, yeah.
Right. Thank you, Commissioner Leller, for the question. Um, we have already, as part of this process, Murray Hills Christian Church has put in a new fence that limits access, um, you know, and and communicates that this is a space that is a dedicated playground, right? Uh, so that fence separates the playground from the parking lot and from the rest of the of the church property. Uh, and we've also talked about what would be the right kind of signage to put in place to communicate expectations around responsible behavior and play in the playground. Uh, and I I believe Jenna or Kevin are welcome to add on, but I believe those are the main ways at this time um that we have modified the space. We also have thought about how to modify our our operations, right? And so in the in the transportation memo and in other parts of our application, we've noted uh limiting the number of children that are on the playground at a particular point in time. Uh, as well as limiting the hours that kids are outside uh playing, even after the conditional use permit is approved. And we have more kids uh permitted to come and play and learn at Ash Creek.
I I will add one thing. Um, as part of our work uh with CWS to do the design review compliance, we'll be doing additional um planting in the vegetated corridor buffer between the play area and the property line. So that may add some enhancement, just the additional vegetation may do something to contribute. Um, you know, it might not make a huge difference, but there will be denser vegetation that may block some sound. Um, and. I can't speak to the details of this process, but I know in the past, the church has um looked into the possibility of constructing a sound wall and had talked to neighbors and was trying to see if that would um kind of help. And I think that may have kind of stalled out because they determined it it might not, you know. Satisfy anyone, but they they have attempted to um. Explore that as a as a as an option in the past.
Thank you. Um, another question, I'm going to turn off my video. Um. This came up again in letters from the neighbors, neighborhood. Um, is the playground open to other users? And and I did observe the fence that you talked about. I mean, it seemed like. Um, it was an enclosure. I don't know if there's a gate, for example. Um, so is there a gate for other users to use the site or um is it meant to be internal to the play school only?
So, okay, I I will clarify that the the playground does not, you know, belong to the play school. It belongs to the church for their use. So the 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 play school gets to use it during our hours of operation, but you know, it's not our playground. It belongs to the church. So there, you know, they have activities on the weekends. They can choose to welcome whoever they they want. It's it's not for our exclusive use. Um, the fence in part is to give them the ability to kind of control it, maybe for like unauthorized nighttime access more. Um, and also provide safety, you know, for people using the playground to keep them from running up into the road. Uh, so it's it's also a safety enhancement. Um, but the intent is to allow members of the public to use that space and be welcoming. I mean, that's something that the church intentionally wants to do to provide the community benefit. Um, and so the the fence is not intended to make it private space. Um, but it is intended to kind of help them, you know, control unoperas- like nighttime use after, you know, hours when 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 a playground wouldn't typically be open anyway, like outside of outside of allowable noise. Hours or something, so.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Adams or Commissioner Ellis, do either of you gentlemen have anything to add or? Yes. Okay. Thank you, Ash Creek again. We are now at the public testimony portion of the agenda. I will call for public testimony in groups, starting with those in favor of the application. Then those in opposition to the application, then those in fav- neither in favor nor in opposition. As a reminder, testimony is limited. The criteria that apply to the application are important. Now is the time for testimony in favor of the application. Boom, bingo. Okay, what do I have here? Taylor? By Taylor Golston, Golston?
Yeah, hi, Taylor Golston, yes, hi.
Name and address, please.
Uh, my name is Taylor Nathan Golston. My address is one zero one six zero Southwest one forty eighth Avenue. Am I good to go?
Yes.
Awesome. Um, I have lived in this neighborhood for nineteen years since I was twelve years old. Um, in the summer of two thousand and twenty-one, I started looking for preschools for my then three year old son and stumbled upon Ash Creek Play School. I loved that it was walking distance from my house, how involved parents got to be, and had an incredible playground. We joined and have been a part of this co-op ever since. Fast forward to the spring of two thousand and twenty-two, my husband was diagnosed with stage four metastatic testicular cancer. Sorry, in advance if I cry, when he was twenty-nine and our boys were one and a half and five. This involved three rounds of inpatient chemotherapy and four cross-country life-threatening surgeries. Ash Creek allowed us to stay free of charge. The membership created meal trains for my family and assisted in fundraising for our out of pocket expenses. This allowed our children some normal during a very abnormal time. I cannot stress how hard it is to find quality preschools, as many of them have shut down post-COVID nineteen. And how important cooperative preschools are to the teachers, children, and families involved in them. It's unfortunate anyone would think the noise is a nuisance, especially those that have raised children who played on this exact playground. Those noises are sounds of childhood, education, and our community coming together. That's it. Thank you.
Doop. Next will be Lisa. I'm sorry, if I don't have it there, it is Lisa Carpenter, please. Go ahead. Got five minutes.
Sorry, I had to put some things over. Hi. Hi, my name is Lisa Carpenter and my address is eight five four seven Southwest one thirty-third Avenue. And um I have a five year old daughter. Her name is Caroline, and she's been attending Ash Creek Play School since January two thousand and twenty-three. And I'm just here to ask you all to approve the conditional use permit. The administration of Ash Creek Play School has been working tirelessly with the city to confirm to all the permit requirements, despite the fact that they're all parent volunteers who, you know, have their own families and jobs outside of working at the school. And they've done it because they know how important the school is, not only to our families, but to the the whole community around. Beaverton, as Daniel mentioned, is considered a childcare desert. Um, and I know that for a lot of people, this involves being on long wait lists for for quality childcare, commuting, you know, across town or to different towns to find a spot for their child. And some people end up, you know, having to pull out of their their productive jobs entirely just because they can't make it work. And I know I've been in that position as well. Um. And so I'll go a little bit into my personal experience, just briefly, just to illustrate how important the school is. Uh, my daughter Caroline is amazing and she's creative and she's kind. Excuse me, but she's also, you know, a little emotionally sensitive. And we've had two other schools that, you know, we'd go there, things would seem all right. She'd be there for a few weeks. And then we'd get that dreaded phone call where they call and say, sorry, we can't support your child. You have to leave. And it started to feel a little bit hopeless until January two thousand and twenty-three, when we found Ash Creek Play School. And they've been so welcoming and so supportive. And I can, I know that there's so many other families, some might be here tonight, some might not be here tonight, who have been in the exact same position. And the school has a very unique and important role in the lives of all families, but especially those who need a little help finding that community belonging. And Ash Creek Play School has really been there for our family in that way. And so I go into that personal story just to kind of illustrate the importance of the school. But I know the important point of this meeting is to say that um. That Ash Creek Place, well, we're not asking for a huge, you know, updates to physical property or anything like that. We just want to update the, the school just needs, wants to update its um permit to allow us to continue to serve the community in the way that it already has been. And um. Yeah, so I strongly urge you to approve the permit and the design review letter so that we can just continue serving the community and for the children of our of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. Does any commissioner have any questions? I approach and said. Being none. Next up is Miriam Del Greco.
Hello. Thank you for having this meeting tonight. My name is Miriam Del Greco, and I'm the vice president of the Ash Creek Play School School Board. I have my Bachelor of Arts in Early Childhood Education and a Master's of Science in Curriculum and Instruction. I was also the director of Saint Gabriel Preschool from two thousand and sixteen to two thousand and seventeen, and I have taught at Oregon Episcopal School for the past twelve years. I am the parent of two Ash Creek students. We are at a unique time where all the current Ash Creek students were born during the COVID nineteen pandemic or were babies when the world shut down. These children all came into the world at a time where it was very quiet and uncertain. In the summer of two thousand and twenty, when my daughter was born, all the playgrounds in the area had caution tape around them because we did not know if it was safe for children to play together outside. I'm so glad that now we do know that it's a safe place. We did not know if our children would go to safely go to preschool. We did not know if they would ever be able to safely have play dates or have friends. As new parents, all we knew was that the world our children were entering was not what we had ever imagined. Ash Creek is a co-op preschool, which means it is a community for the children and their caregivers. Not only do the children get to play together, it is also a space for parents to come together as a community. This community has been invaluable to our family. With my background in early childhood education, I was so sure that I would never find a preschool that I felt was good enough for my children. That all changed when we toured Ash Creek in February of two thousand and twenty-two. I was interested in joining a co-op play school because my brother and I attended a co-op preschool over thirty years ago. And my mom is still friends with the other parents from that co-op, even though we moved away a long, long ago. When my family toured Ash Creek, I appreciated that the walls had student artwork. And teacher Elizabeth did not care when my daughter started to take the artwork off the walls and rearrange it. She stayed calm and was so welcoming to to our whole family. I had found a preschool that provided developmentally appropriate activities, had flexible schedules, flexible tuition, and required parent participation, which would let me have the parent community I was craving. I became a parent in two thousand and twenty when there were no opportunities for new parents to gather. I even had to take my childbirth class online. Everything was on our own. My daughter started preschool at Ash Creek in September of two thousand and twenty-two, ending her COVID baby isolation, ending my COVID parent isolation. For the first time, my daughter had her own friends. For the first time, I was somewhere with parents who had children the same age as mine. And we were able to talk about the joys and challenges of parenthood. Ash Creek brought us all together in a place where we get to really know each other's children from parent teaching in the classroom. Ash Creek is a place where our family has made lifelong friends. Last June, I had a sudden death in my family and needed to travel for the weekend. I knew just hit a call to help take care of my kids so that I could be gone for a few days. And the kids would be so busy that they barely noticed my absence. I'm grateful that Ash Creek is right here in our neighborhood, where we have close family friends right here that are easy to get to when we need our village. Now my younger son attends Ash Creek as well. He is thriving. The Ash Creek community has been a huge source of strength for my family. We would not be who we are without Ash Creek. The COVID nineteen pandemic took away countless opportunities for community and connection, both in our neighborhood and throughout the world. We are so lucky to have the gift of Ash Creek Play School right here in the Murray Hill community to bring back a place for families to connect and thrive. Please approve the cup and the playground review. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Del Greco. Commissioners, any questions? Being none. I have next up Julie Lauren. May begin when you're ready.
Okay, thank you. My name is Julie Lauren. I'm the Director and Lead Teacher of one of the preschool classrooms. It has, I'm going to read the letter that I sent in with some new additions. It has been difficult for me to write this letter. One reason is because I would prefer to spend my time focusing on the good quality childcare that I have promised to Ash Creek families. They deserve a good quality, safe environment with focused, energetic, and happy teachers. I am writing to express my heartfelt gratitude and appreciation for the incredible impact Ash Creek Play School has had on me and my family since we joined the community in two thousand nineteen. From the moment we became a part of this vibrant and nurturing environment, our family life and work-life balance have significantly improved. The supportive and stable atmosphere at Ash Creek has been a cornerstone of our daily lives. Knowing that I am part of a caring and enriching environment allows me to focus on our professional responsibilities. My dedicated coworkers go above and beyond to create a safe and stimulating space where our children can learn, grow, and thrive. Ash Creek also provides parent education that reaches far outside the walls of our school and into the community now and into the future. I have never experienced such a wonderful environment despite teaching at multiple preschools, as well as sending my own three children to traditional preschools. The sense of community at Ash Creek Play School is truly remarkable. We have forged meaning, meaningful connections with other families, creating a network of support and friendship that extends beyond the school. This sense of belonging has enriched our lives, providing us with a community that shares our values and understands the challenges and joys of parenting. Our students have blossomed under the guidance of the talented educators at Ash Creek. Their passion for teaching and commitment to fostering a love of learning in each child is evident in every interaction. It is reassuring to know that our children are not only receiving an excellent education, but are also developing essential social and emotional skills that will serve them well throughout their lives. The stability and consistency provided by Ash Creek Play School have been invaluable in our journey as parents, teachers, and students. The routines and structured, uh, structure offered by the school have helped our children feel secure and confident, allowing them to explore the world around them with curiosity and enthusiasm. I am profoundly grateful for the positive impact Ash Creek Play School has had on my family. The supportive community, dedicated educators, and nurturing environment have made a significant difference in our lives. And I am confident that Ash Creek will continue to be a cherished part of my family's journey. We need Ash Creek and all of its benefits. It makes me sad to think there aren't enough preschools in our area. Children are more successful af, after having the positive experiences preschools like, a preschool like Ash Creek provides. An important thing to note is that Ash Creek doesn't believe in suspension or expulsion, which will thankfully be banned starting July first of two thousand twenty six. I hope to hear the joyful noises of children playing on our playground for decades to come. Thank you to staff for indicating that the proposal, proposal meets the approval criterion. Thank you.
Um, one moment, Ms. Lauren. May we please have your address?
My address is one four zero seven five Southwest Paddock Court.
Thank you. Commissioners, does anybody have any question? Being none. I have Christine Gilfillan. Gilfillan? If I massacred your last name, I apologize.
Good evening. My name is Christine Gilfillan. I live at one five three eight oh Southwest Sand Piper Lane, which is approximately eight houses west of the church. I've lived in my house for thirty-two and a half years. Over the years, Sand Piper Lane has had many families use the Murray Hill Christian Playground. Boys' sons have participated in scouts, girls' daughters have participated in Girl Scouts at the church. Um, my children have attended Vacation Bible School at the church. And now I am lucky to have four grandsons who attend Ash Creek. Um, it is been a lifesaver for my children for, for daycare while they all work and support their community. At present, Sand Piper Lane has sixteen kids under twelve, six under fifteen, and six grandchildren under five. All of these children use the playground at Murray Hill Christian Church. I know a family on Sand Piper Lane that purposely moved to Sand Piper Lane to be close to Ash Creek. Um, co-ops are interesting in that they have so much help. So many people are hands-on. Um, my oldest attended a co-op in Tigard. I just want to say that Sand Piper Lane supports as a community, as neighbors, all the things that Ash Creek does. And thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, Commissioners. Do you have any questions? Okay. Now is the time. F, uh, now is the time for public testimony and opposition. Please remember the name and address. The first individual I have that is David. Picture name and address and remember that it's a five minute.
My name's David Goldar. I reside at one oh one seven five Southwest one hundred and forty ninth Terrace here in Beaverton. Um, Chair Winter, I did have a point of order questions I'd like to address prior to, uh, starting my testimony if possible.
Yeah, I mean, turn off the clock. What's up?
A couple of questions. Um, first, we're a two-person household. My wife's here with me also. In the interest of just simplicity, is it possible that we can use both of our time by one person?
Uh, yes.
Okay, thank you. I don't even think we'll need the full amount of time. I just wanted to ask.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, Chair Winter. Um, according to the Development Code parameters for public testimony, the time limit is per person. Um, so while other members of the household can take their own five-minute time period, they cannot be combined for one speaker.
I did not know that. Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you for clarifying that. I appreciate it. We'll stay with our five minutes. Um, second, I'm a touch confused here. Um, there's been multiple applications on this particular file. The most recent, um, that we saw appears that somebody signed it from the church, but the applicant didn't sign it. I, I just, I just have a question. Who's the applicant here tonight?
Ash Creek Play School.
Okay, so is the City Attorney's Office representative available?
There she is.
I am, but I would say this is the time for public testimony and not necessarily, uh, engagement. So, you know, you're using your five minutes and, um,
I've already been told that I'm not using my five minutes, ma'am.
And, but we have no obligation to, uh,
And Miss, the chair just already said that I can have a few questions to ask. Is that correct, Chair Winter? I'm not looking to engagement. I just, I have some, a couple of questions to help with.
Here's how, here's how we define this. Do you have questions? It is best to ask them on, once you finish your presentation. Here, the planning commission does not engage in our day of question and answer.
I'm not looking for a question and answer, sir. I just, I have questions on giving my testimony.
Yeah. So, if I were you, I would suggest testimony. And the questions can come later.
Okay, thank you for letting me know that. I appreciate it. All right, I'll go ahead and start my testimony. I've already given my name and who I am. I am the next door neighbor to the church and have lived here for twenty-five years. I'm also at the hundred feet of Ash Creek's operations. I just want to make something clear. Our issue's not with Ash Creek or with kids. We're parents, for crying out loud. Our issues are three things: noise, site design, and due process. And tonight, I'm gonna just highlight two main points from a written testimony in the interest of time for everybody. Say, do appreciate everybody's time here tonight, and I reference you back to my written testimony if you have any questions or for further details on these points as well as others. There are two points that I'm going to address. The first is what is the purpose of the con- Can you hear me?
Now I can.
That was interesting.
Stop, yes, it was. It has happened.
All right. So again, I will address two points in my testimonies tonight in the interest of time. One is what is the purpose of the conditions in the current CUP's? And two, does this application show or demonstrate that what it's proposing does a better job of achieving those purposes? First, um, it's pretty clear in ninety-four what the purposes. We had an application for a small Montessori preschool. The conditions, though, were not to approve it. It could have been approved without conditions. The conditions were needed in order to approve with the approval criteria. In particular, the minimum, or I should say, the impact to nearby residences. So, that was the purpose of those conditions at that particular time. What they found is that they achieved the approval criteria, and I would agree with it. We never had issues with the Montessori school. Now, in fast forwarding to two thousand, two thousand one, we had an application that was quite clear. It was to expand the church significantly for their use. And the conditions were dealing with the issues that arose. As you can imagine, there were a lot of questions and concerns, particularly with now having a school a hundred feet from home here to the south. That's where condition of approval number three came up. Condition number three came up because it was really an agreement between the church, the neighbors, and also the city. It intentionally restricted the site's use by any school other than the Montessori school. Now, why would that be? It was simple. The site wasn't designed for a school, and we knew at the time that the Montessori school didn't have any impact. And we were trusting that a future planning commission, if this issue came up, would solve this issue or the application would at least solve these issues. So in turning to the current application and taking a look at it, we already know that noise is a consideration as well as other impacts. Yet in looking at this application, there is no information, there is no factual information at all that it does a better job of achieving minimizing the impact to the livability of the nearby residential homes. Now, you don't have to take my word for it. We also have an acoustical engineer who submitted a report on this and arrived at the same conclusion. We also could kind of use common sense. If you increase enrollment, you're going to increase noise. You got to figure out a way to deal with it. Same with the playground. So my main point here tonight is it's not about kids and it's not about Ash Creek. It's about site design, and this site was never designed for this activity, and there's nothing in this application that solves that. So the current CUP's and their conditions, they work when they're followed. And as far as this application, it doesn't work. It doesn't have any information in it that solves these concerns. So my ask is simple. It's to follow the law and to disapprove the application. And please invite Ash Creek to sit down with the neighbors, which they've refused to do, and sit down with the appropriate experts and come up with a proposal that does work. Because we all would like to support them, myself included, but we also want livable homes. And I don't think that's too much to ask, do you? With that, I will conclude my public testimony. I thank this committee for its time. I thank staff for its time, and I'll open it up for any questions.
Holder, thank you for your testimony. Commission members, does anybody have any questions? Being none. Oh, Commissioner Ellis.
Yeah, apologies. Yeah, uh, Mr. Gold, just a question for you. I was reading through the, uh, the public commentary, uh, the, the written materials that you sent in. And, um, this is kind of a, an opinion question. Most of the noise, uh, that you're, that you're commenting on, is it coming from what you would reasonably assume to be the active classrooms and, and school activities? Or is it coming from what was noted in the written materials as the, the public? The public who are, who are coming by different hours, teenagers, et cetera, et cetera?
Thank you for asking. So it's coming from both, but predominantly it's during school hours in particular. And the concern is that, first of all, the site was never designed for this larger play structure and playground. Um, nor was it ever designed to take this activity into account. So there's no noise abatement, and there's no solutions here to solve that. And the noise just comes right down in our backyard. And at times, we're not able to actually hear each other at the house, whether that's inside or outside. And that's the core problem here. It's a site design problem. It's not about kids. It's not about Ash Creek. It's that the site was never designed for it, and there's no solutions in this. So, yes, it's the daytime noise from the school up there. And yes, there's some noise after hours as well, but it all comes down to site design. That, that's the problem here, folks.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other commissioner comments, questions? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lauren. Next up, I have Doug. Doug, just need your name and address, please. Doug, we can't hear you if you're talking.
This is Doug Gordon.
There we go.
Thank you. Thanks, Commissioners. Appreciate this greatly. Uh, my address is one zero zero five zero Southwest one hundred fifty first place. Uh, my property is immediately next door to the, uh, church property. Wanted to just say a few things. I've made, uh, three submissions. Uh, one, uh, with, uh, thirty exhibits, and that was, uh, last week. And then, uh, two days ago, six audio recordings, uh, which I am requesting you to listen to. Uh, and then a supplemental submission today, which addresses a number of, um, issues raised by the, uh, and, and problems raised by the staff report. Just briefly, uh, I'm a, a forty-five-year resident of Beaverton. I've lived in, uh, my present residence for twenty-five, no, twenty-nine years. Time flies. Um, I began my career as a sixth-grade elementary school teacher, public school. And wouldn't you know it, I had playground duty, not to mention safety patrol. And, uh, I've been a friend of the church, uh, all these years, uh, although I belong to a different church. I've attended off and on for decades. Uh, there's been lots of cooperation between the church and, uh, myself, uh, property committee, uh, matters. I've participated in, uh, the ministries of the church downtown, feeding the homeless and so on. I have friends in the congregation. But, uh, this, uh, has, uh, issue, this problem has presented a kind of a different, uh, 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 question between us. Uh, I wanted to just outline briefly, um, I, uh, my, my property, uh, is seventy feet from the perimeter of the playground to the, to the, uh, east. And, uh, between my, my house and my property line is about six feet. The builder chose to put my house literally on the property line. Uh, this has, uh, lots of ramifications here. Uh, I'd also say that there, yes, there are, is, uh, uh, some foliage between, uh, my house and the, uh, church, uh, perimeter, playground perimeter. However, uh, that's a few, uh, uh, dug firs and wild, uh, overgrowth. Uh, there's nothing in between. Uh, it provides absolutely no sound insulation, period. Uh, and, uh, in any event, uh, those recordings are important because, uh, I wanted the commissioners to hear what I hear. And I think, uh, you will conclude that the noise that comes into my house and my yard is unreasonable and excessive. And I have to tell you that since that playground was, uh, uh, built, uh, let's just say, two thousand fifteen or eleven, um, and, and then after, uh, Ash Creek began to occupy it, my enjoyment of my property has diminished by at least fifty percent. Uh, my house is such that when the Ash Creek, uh, playground activity is taking place, I can hear the noise inside of my house with my windows, every one of them closed in every major living, major living area, including my, my bedroom. I can't have my windows open when the, uh, children are there. Uh, and, and this is not just Ash Creek. This is a public playground. I'll get to that in a minute. Um, I've stopped using my decks for the last three years. I used to enjoy those for all kinds of reasons. I've stopped using that portion of my house because, uh, of the noise that continues from the morning, afternoon, uh, and into well into the evening and sometimes the night. Uh, I've provided, uh, very substantial testimony, uh, to establish that the, uh, noise ordinance has been violated. I want you to know that there have been meetings, uh, with the commissioners, and I come, uh, well informed. Please know that, uh, the last exhibit I submitted, uh, is a petition with objection signed by twenty-three, I repeat, twenty-three families whose houses are right on the church property or very nearby who are being impacted adversely. This situation in its entirety has a very negative impact on livability, to which the applicant has not spoken with any firsthand knowledge whatsoever. Uh, I would also, uh, point out that on exhibit one, you can see a photo that I took in nineteen ninety-six, which shows a little tiny play area and a little play structure. Compare that with the photos of the current mega playground. Yes, in nineteen ninety-four, it was, uh, properly considered an incidental or accessory use, but that's not what it is now by any means, for, for the reasons it was built or the way it's being used. Um, I want to, uh, speak briefly about the nineteen ninety-four CUP. That is, the analysis in the staff report.
I need to remind you that testimony is limited to five minutes. You're pushing six.
Well, let me just, uh, try to recap if you don't mind.
Thank you.
The nineteen ninety-four, uh, CUP is the linchpin for the entire, uh, approval by the staff based on the, uh, the, uh, argument that, uh, the, uh, little, uh, play area was actually approved by the, uh, CUP. That is not correct whatsoever. But would you please read the language of the order, which requires the Montessori school to operate only inside of the building? Uh, and, uh, that was never voted, voted upon by the commission to approve that.
Are you wrapping up? Are you wrapping up?
It's required by the bylaws. I would ask the, uh, commissioners, uh, respectfully to consider, uh, my submission today, which addresses the application of the noise ordinance, which is essentially written out of existence by the staff report. And also, the photograph.
Sir?
Yes.
Are you wrapping up?
Yeah, the last thing I'd have to say is that the photographs establish that, uh, and, and what the church trustees have told me, establish this is a public playground that's unregulated and is a source of excessive noise all day long, seven days a week. Thank you for the, uh, you know, additional buffer of time.
Thank you. Um, commissioners, does anybody have any questions? Comments? Nope. Okay. We have, next up is, and I'm going to apologize right up front if I mispronounce your name. It's not intentional. I'm going to say Mohsen Sahaj. Far. I wasn't trying, but I'm not sure I got very close.
That's okay. Uh, good evening, everyone. I'm Mohsen Shojafar. I live in one five zero six five southwest Gold Drive in the south of, um, playground. It's the first property after the wetland between us and the playground. So, uh, I'm here to express some of my concerns. Uh, I believe this expansion poses significant challenges and potential negative impact on our residential neighborhood. The first one is increased traffic and safety concerns. The increase in student enrollment will lead to a substantial rise in traffic around the play school, particularly during drop-off and pickup times. This surge in traffic can create hazardous condition for both children and residents, especially given the proximity, uh, proximity of the play school to residential homes around seventy-two, one forty feet. The narrow residential streets are not designed to handle such high volumes of traffic, which, uh, could lead to congestion and increased risk of accident. The other, uh, issue is noise pollution, which everyone is concerned. And, uh, we, we, we love the, the noise, the noise of children. It's not the issue. I have a twenty-month, um, son, and I understand that. But this noise is particularly concerning for those who work from home and have young children and elderly family member who are sensitive to noises. And, uh, another concern is impact on property values. The expansion of the play school could potentially affect the property values in the surrounding area. Perspective home buyers may be deterred by the increased traffic, noise, and overall change in the neighborhood's character. This could lead to decrease in property values negatively impacting the financial well-being of current residents. The other concern is environmental concern. The proposed expansion include modification to the outdoor play area. It is crucial to consider the environmental impact of these changes because we have a wetland between the play school and, uh, our house. And, uh, one of the staff mentioned that they are going to plan some, uh, uh, additional vegetation to block the sound. It's not legally allowed because the wetland is protected, so they cannot do this. And it will, uh, this kind of activity could disturb the local ecosystem and lead to long-term environmental damage. And the last concern is community character. Our neighborhood is primarily residential, and the current size of Ash Creek Play School fits well within the context. However, tripling the student population will alter the character of our community, making it feel more commercialist, residential. And at the end, uh, while I support the mission of Ash Creek Play School, recognize the value that they're going to provide by a urge the city council and planning commission to carefully consider the potential negative impacts of this expansion on our neighborhood. We need a livable neighborhood, peaceful, and like any of other, uh, people that they send their kids to this play school. We, we want to enjoy our property. We want to enjoy, um, the peace in our backyard. And when we are working from home and our parents when came here and sensitivity noises, they, they want to have that peace as well, like other people in the Beaverton area. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, do we have any questions? Seeing none. Next speaker I have is Brian's iPhone.
Thank you. Um, my name is Brian Culligan. I live at one zero zero seven nine southwest one hundred fifty-first place. Um, about four houses down from the church, and I'll be brief here. Um, while I speak in opposition, it's not my intended, um, you know, point to diminish any of the favorable things that people have spoken about previously. Further, I don't believe anyone on the call would diminish the value of the community's preschool and the child's life. Um, I myself am a father of a seven-year-old. And while many of the parents of students leave or live within an adequate buffer, many of us neighbors remain relatively dense housing in proximity to a church where, um, what was mentioned or presented as a modest increase is actually three times the current enrollment. And while that doesn't seem like a lot, the noise is a deterrent to our house's livability, along with some of the parking that results on our street from the school. So again, I said I'd be brief. But in closing, I don't wish the children's opportunity to learn and a family's opportunity for community be removed. But an expansion in the capacity requested will only expand, uh, diminish livability for our immediate neighborhood and would choose to hold to existing limit that they are operating within. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, does anybody have any comments or questions? Seeing none. Apparently, I have another individual who'd like to add. Um, Mr. Robert Kiefer. His name and address, please.
Hello, my name is Robert. Hello?
Go ahead.
My name is Robert Kiefer. I live at one zero one one five southwest one hundred fifty-first place with my wife Debbie. We have three grown children who do not live at the property. We also have a granddaughter that we care for two days a week. Purchased in twenty fifteen and have lived there for nine years. We have some objections to a proposal that would triple the size of the existing place. Noise factor is ongoing, disrupts the peace and quiet of residential living. Between the church and our home is a wooded area. The property is across the cul-de-sac on the opposite side of one hundred fifty-first place. Though there is some distance between the church and our house. Others in the neighborhood are much closer to the church than that, and I'm sure they experience the noise much greater level. Another main concern is the traffic coming and going in church property. There have been several problems and close calls. You turn on one hundred fifty-first place from the rear road, the street is quite narrow. Cars are parked at the curb on one side. There is not enough room for two-way traffic. Only one lane of traffic can get by. Many times vehicles from one direction or the other have to slow way down and maneuver carefully past each other. The other issue is with people entering the church property, I'm sorry, exiting the church property onto the street. Any vehicles coming out of the driveway do not slow down or stop till the driveway meets the street. While we have not been witness to any accidents, we have been close calls. Both of us have had drivers pull into the street right in front of us. We have had the right of way. We have had to brake suddenly to avoid a collision. The volume of traffic were to increase three times the current level. It only seems inevitable that accidents will occur at some point. Thank you for this opportunity to share our thoughts and concerns.
Thank you, Mr. Kiefer, for your testimony. Commissioners, does anybody have any comments or questions? Seeing none. Apparently, we're done with those in opposition. So staff, do I have? It doesn't appear that I have any public testimony either in favor or in opposition. Am I correct? Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute. That was, and one more. Um, ready, Anne Faro? Ms. Faro, please name and address. May we begin? If you're talking, we can't hear you. Ms. Faro, if you're talking, we can't hear you. Oh, apparently we've had a.
No, I'm still here.
All right. Are we ready?
Yes. My name is. Thank you. My name is Anne Faro. I live at one zero one seven zero southwest one hundred forty-ninth terrace. We are adjacent to the south, immediately adjacent to the south end of the church property. I wanted to add my support for those of us who do not appreciate the noise, the traffic, or the existence of the preschool. This application is for an increase in the use. And the noise currently is less than what is, is going to be in the future. And it is more than what it has been in the past. I appreciate the parents who have had positive experiences at the school. I live at my home with my husband, and I have two children who are grown. We have no children in the school system anymore. However, I'm seventy-two years old, and I do walk the neighborhood. I have walked up to the rear roadside of the church. And as I walk slowly, I have on occasion stopped at the cyclone fence. I want to add that in the statements and findings, it stated that a new fence has been installed and that it, the purpose is to mitigate the noise. That's what it states. However, it is not mitigating noise. It is a cyclone fence. It is a chain lock fence. When I walk, I occasionally stop at the chain lock, the chain fence, and peer down at the children. I know what the activity is there. As soon as I am at the chain link fence, one of the parents immediately approaches me to find out if I have any nefarious activities in mind. They immediately engage me to find out why I am there. I'm simply there walking. I also want to add that I am a woman and I am old. There have been men in our neighborhood who have been in the same position that I have. And the parents on the playground supervising the children have called the police. They've called the police more than twice as a precautionary action. Apparently, they're concerned that the men are some kind of a threat to their children. So my conclusion is that we find the Ash Creek Play, Play School a nuisance. And these applications are nothing but an application to expand the childcare facilities at the church. Prior to, when we moved here in nineteen ninety-two, there was a small play area on our side of the property. It has since been removed. It consisted of one picnic table, one swing, and a structure, a metal structure for play, playing on. The church invited us to use the play area, which we did. And some of us, when our children were younger, we went up there and we used the play area. That was an accessory to the church. The playground that is there now is not an accessory to the church. It is an accessory to the play school or the daycare or whatever you want to call it. I think it's a daycare. They're asking to expand the daycare because there is a so-called desert in our neighborhood, which there is not. There are more than one childcare facilities and schools, Christian schools, within walking distance of my house. It is not a desert. Furthermore, the Ash Creek Play School says that it is not affiliated with the church. They say that on their website. And at the same time, they tell us that they are a part of the church and an extension of the church. And we're all in this for our children's development and learning and daycare and childcare. In this, it's like they want to be everything to every. In this, it's like they want to be everything to everybody. They're not. So I object to their existence in my neighborhood.
Ms. Faro?
Yes.
Are you wrapping it up, please?
Yes, I'm done.
All right. Thank you. Commissioners, do, does anybody have any questions? Next up, we have Mr. Ronald Sadler. Name and address. Sadler, are you out there?
Can you hear me now?
Now, there, there you are.
Okay, 10170 Southwest 149th Terrace. I, our house is immediately adjacent to the lower south side of the church property. We have lived here since the house was new, thirty-two years this month. I know the neighborhood. I am a little perplexed as to why we're even here tonight since the planning department didn't have a completed application signed by the applicant until a few minutes before this meeting occurred. That's bizarre. So onward with what I was going to say. The applicant says they're, in our neighborhood, it's a daycare desert, and we desperately need education options. With a little bit of checking, I found nineteen direct replacements for Ash Creek, nineteen, within about a six or seven-minute drive of the church. Additionally, many of the parents I've spoken to, which by the way are quite nice, the parents of the students that attend now, they don't walk to that facility. They drive to it. They come from some distance. In fact, I think, uh, uh, I will not get the right name. I'm not good at it. Uh, Mr. Hauser, that may or may not be the correct name, that spoke for the church, uh, lives about four miles away. He comes to Ash Creek because that allows his mother-in-law to pick up his child after classes are over. This is not a school, a preschool, where parents and children walk to it. They are driving to it. Originally, it was a Montessori school. The CUP, which Planning omitted in several places, they call it a school, approved school. It was a Montessori school. The Planning Department and the city council and mayor at that time felt that it needed to be adequately described as a Montessori school. A Montessori school is not a daycare facility. Additionally, there are many, many options. When Doug and I gathered signatures by going around one afternoon and early evening and got the twenty-four people that signed separate petitions opposing this expansion, uh, we found only one person that said, well, she wasn't sure that she should sign it because, now, this is her words, not mine, "The church needs the money to stay in existence, and without Ash Creek, they may not be able to survive." She further explained that she thinks that it would be turned into a large apartment complex, whereas it's not even remotely something that can be done because that's part of the comprehensive plan that have to be changed. And comprehensive, comprehensive plans aren't just changed for one small property. In any event, the noise impacts are great. I've been in a licensed real estate agent since a couple of months out of college. I'm seventy-four years old. This past July was fifty-two years. I've seen it all. I've done many of the forms that the agents use today. I've done classes for the real estate agency. Um, I've pretty much done all of it. And I would, I would note that if an agent was to show any property for sale that abuts the church or is, is across the street from a property that abuts it, they are going to have to disclose Ash Creek, the number of students, and its noise. I believe, and I can quantify it, I'm quite sure, having testified as an expert witness dozens of times for various legal matters, uh, that I can quantify a decrease in value of the neighborhood houses of five to ten percent. Now, that's a large number. That's anywhere from thirty-five thousand to maybe sixty thousand dollars. It's a big number. If this goes forward and there are eighty students, there will be ramifications to Ash Creek, Murray Hill Community Church, Christian Church, excuse me, and frankly, the city for approving this. It is not, as you heard the people who talked about, they were in, um, support...
Sadler, you're pushing six minutes, so please try to wrap it up.
Okay. Uh, none of the people that spoke in support of this expansion mentioned that it was necessary. They only talked about what a good time they had there, which is just great. But nobody said, "We need this expansion." The other item that I'd like to mention is the traffic report is flawed. It doesn't account for what's going to be occurring there. It's just not a good deal. The last thing I'm going to say is, Ash Creek is so concerned about their business, which they call a childcare business, that in 2017 and 2022, the state of Oregon dissolved the Ash Creek LLC because they didn't file the proper documents. I have no confidence that they'll do such in the future. The Clean Water Services say there's certain requires...
Sadler?
Yes.
Pushing seven minutes. My patience.
My last comment. Clean Water Services are requiring certain, uh, things to be done. I want to know they're going to get done. I don't want them to be said, "Oh, yeah, we'll do them." Just like many other items they claim they're going to do and didn't do. Thank you for your time. I appreciate my extra time.
Thank you. Commissioners, does anybody have any questions of Mr. Sadler? Next, we have Leslie Yeager. Please state your name and address. And if you're talking, we can't hear you.
Hi, can you hear me now?
Yep.
I'm Leslie Yeager. My address is 10070 Southwest 151st. I'm three houses from the church. And I just want to second the, the concerns on the traffic. Um, there, it's a very dangerous corner where the driveway is, a blind corner. And I have seen cars that miss the driveway and go into the brush there by, by Doug's house. So, um, the increased traffic is, is a huge concern. I'm not as big, you know, on the noise as I am the traffic and the decrease in the property values because of the increased, um, attendance at the school. And we, we have nothing against the school itself or the children. We are totally for what the school supports, but just what it's going to do to, um, the community is what we're concerned about.
Yeah, this is a, this is Doug, Leslie's husband. Um, is it okay if I speak?
Well, you've had your time.
No, it's a different Doug.
No, 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 this is a different Doug.
Yeager, sorry. I was confused. Oh, yes, you can split your time any way you want it.
Yeah, I just want, I just want to say what she's, what, what everybody, with several people said about the traffic. The tra, when you're talking about increasing from twenty kids to sixty kids, you're talking about increasing the employees from like, you know, two to ten. Um, that's an extreme amount of traffic, and it's already like extreme how it is right now. Um, the noise increasing, what you're talking about, is way over extreme. Um, if you notice how many people are speaking against it right now, of course, no one here is like, that are against it or against community or children or all that. Everyone is against the impact this is making on the immediate people that live right here. The people that use the school, um, really aren't the direct, you know, people that live right by the school. Um, what's, you know, how the playground was somehow, you know, this tiny playground and when it was made into this massive play area and just no one paid attention to it and, and didn't get permits and all this. Don't understand how that could even happen in reality. Um, uh, you know, stuff, stuff like, um, Ash Creek is their own, they're basically their own company. They have nothing to do with the church, and the church is there, they're being allowed to be there because of us, because of the city, because of the neighborhood. Um, we, we're not allowing someone to have this hu, you know, this huge school created. Um, what's happening right now is not really acceptable, but what could happen, that's insane.
There's also been total disregard for the, the community because Ash Creek never, um, you know, consulted us on their plans. They just went ahead and just assumed that they could do it without, you know, getting, you know, our advice or how we felt about it. So they're just like steamrolling over us is what it feels like.
Well, and they're, it almost seems a little bit like that's sort of what's happening with the city and the taxpayers that live around here. So we'd appreciate it if you guys can really look into how this shouldn't really happen at this level. Thank you.
Are both of you done?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, are there any questions, comments, or thoughts? Okay. Staff has indicated there doesn't seem to be any testimony, either in favor nor opposed. So we will move on to the applicant's rebuttal. The applicant's rebuttal is limited to five minutes. Please keep comments focused on issues raised during the public testimony. Please do not provide any new evidence. I have to start this whole thing all over again, and I don't want to do that. Go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Winter and Planning Commissioners. I'm going to provide a rebuttal on behalf of the applicants. We recognize that some neighbors have shared issues with noise, and they've done so in the past. And we've taken steps at Ash Creek to put in place the fencing that, as was noted, is not a sound wall or a barrier, but conveys that the, the access there is limited, right, and that it is for playing calmly and kindly in the playground. We will be planting additional plants in the corridor between Ash Creek and the closest neighbors in line with the Clean Water Services requirements and as is listed in our application materials. And this is specifically to comply with environmental requirements, but there may be sound mitigation benefits. We've also put in the record previously that will be limiting the hours we spend outside to more than, no more than three hours per day, even when we're up to sixty kids, and we'll be thoughtfully limiting the number of children who are outside at one time during school hours. Other concerns have been addressed in our written narrative and staff reports. We won't take up further time rebutting them. We at Ash Creek and the Murray Hills Christian Church were biased on this matter, right? We're biased in favor of allowing more children in our community to have places to play, learn, and grow with their peers, parents, and teachers. Approving this application achieves that, right? It expands the beauty and joy of families game from participating in Ash Creek and playing at Murray Hills Christian Church's playground. A few of the neighbors who oppose this application are also potentially biased, biased away from being inconvenienced by the noise and impact of more children playing in their neighborhood. And it's, it's clear from the hundreds of pages submitted to the record and suggestions during testimony that they oppose our existence that some neighbors have thrown everything they can at this application. And we're really grateful that the city staff serve as a really important vector and reviewer of their claims of our application, and they look through it in detail. They read the hundreds of pages that I didn't quite have time to, to cover in the last week. And they made a recommendation, right? They recommended to the planning commission to approve the conditional use permit and the design review letter with the conditions they listed. And I hope you all will come to the same conclusion, and we're happy to answer any remaining questions related to our rebuttal as you see fit. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hauser. Commissioners, do you have any questions of the applicant? Ain't none. Staff, this is your last chance. Do you have any final comments?
Uh, good evening once again. Thank you, Vice Chair Winter, Steve Ragners, Steve Beaverton. Um, there was a lot of testimony here. I do want to make some clarifying points, not new evidence, um, just answering some questions and clarifying, um, some comments made. Um, we'll start from the top. There's a question at the very beginning asking who is the applicant, who's the property owner. Um, it's very clearly shown in land use application that Ash Creek is the applicant, and Murray Hills Christian Church is the property owner. Um, we did have the land use application from the initial submittal, which made that very clear. Um, the only issue we ran into with missing signatures, we think was a digital hiccup that has since been resolved, but it's very clear on the record who the applicant is and who the property owner is. Uh, there's been questions about what the point of conditions of approval are. I want to remind, uh, commissions, this is in our written testimony and mentioned before. Um, the purpose of conditions of approval are to identify when there are deficiencies in a project. Um, in this case, it was identified that, um, that the twenty students was an appropriate amount based on the analysis provided. Um, and so what is being done here tonight is to analyze if sixty students isn't appropriate enough, if it still can be the condition of approval. So if commission finds that sixty students is an appropriate number, um, that condition of approval from 1994 can be superseded, um, and, and better met by another condition or moved. Um, if in fact the commission finds that all the approval criteria for the condition or for the conditional use permit can be met. Um, there has been discussion on the applicability of the conditional use permit and Montessori school versus childcare facility. I would just like to note that in, um, in the 1994 record, this is exhibit 1.3 of your staff report. Um, it does speak to a Montessori school, or specifically speaks to twenty children between two and a half and five years of age. Um, generally speaking, we do regard that as a childcare facility in our definitions as well as state of Oregon. And if you look at the breakdown in the applicant's, specifically I think of transportation memo actually does it best, talking about the different age groups, and they match up very, very closely. They will spread in that, um, in that 1994. Um, so the childcare facility category here is very much applicable. Um, and I'll also remind commission that conditional use permit runs with the land. Um, the conditional use did not evaporate once the Montessori school closed. Um, it remains with the land, and another childcare facility is allowed to pick it up and continue moving as long as they operate within those parameters. In this case, twenty students to staff, and we're here tonight to talk about whether it can go to sixty. Let me see if there's a, um, there is discussion of traffic concern. Traffic wasn't really part of any of our conversations tonight from staff or the applicant. I will direct the, uh, commission to exhibit, I believe it is 3.6. Um, that is a transportation memo, um, from the applicant identifying the number of students, the number projected. It discusses spacing out the beginning and ending of, um, of school start and school close to kind of defray, so you're not having everybody come at once. Um, uh, because of that effort as well as the number of parking spaces on site, there was not really queuing or traffic concern, um, as viewed by your transportation planning staff. All that information is in your staff report. Finally, we'll talk, there was some, there was some concern about environmental impacts. Um, this is correct. The Clean Water Services is requiring the applicant to, um, do some mitigation planting. Uh, this is because the work, um, done back in 2010, 2011 went into the vegetated corridor. It did not go into the wetland. The wetland is several hundred feet away. Um, but it was in the, not several hundred, maybe hundred fifty feet. The actual impacts went a little bit into the vegetated corridor, which is a protected area. So Clean Water Services requirement is to do mitigation, and that means taking, um, a separate area, removing all the invasive vegetation and putting back new vegetation that is native. Um, so there will be no work in the wetland, um, and the actual playground expansion is already done. And all of the work to be done will need to be in compliance with Clean Water Services requirements, both for the removal of vegetation that is non-native as well as plantings of the new ones. Um, I think that is everything I had on my list I wanted to clarify. Uh, but staff is happy to answer any questions that commission may have before I wrap up this evening. Uh, but staff is happy to answer any questions that commission may have before I wrap up this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Regner. As always, a very thorough analysis.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ellis.
Uh, yeah. Uh, lots of things. Thank you. Um, Steve, a technicality question for you. Um, I'm looking at one specific exhibit. It was, uh, uh, the acoustic engineer, um, who sent us, this is two dot two five, who sent over a note. And there's two points, there are two points in, in that engineer's report that essentially say the same thing, which is that the, the applicant's materials don't specifically walk through how they meet the state DEQ's noise standards. And, and then further in the staff report, it only addresses, uh, Beaverton Municipal Code noise standards. So the, there's a, what, what, what they're calling essentially a missing piece of evidence that there's a, there's not a walkthrough of how the applicant will be meeting the E Q noise mitigation standards. Um, does that sound correct or, or what would your take on that be?
Yeah, uh, great question, uh, Commissioner. Um, generally when we are looking at land use applications, we do look at what is in the development code. Um, there is a reference to DEQ and a blanket statement about compliance. Um, we do respond to the, we think the applicability of the noise ordinance is here. Um, when we have these types of land use applications historically, um, there is not an analysis required of what, um, compliance with DEQ requirements are. So like I said, generally they're just a, a blanket statement. I see Ms. Latinsky has turned on her camera. Um, she wants to add on, um, to my response.
Thank you, Anna Latinsky, Planning Division Manager. I have very little to actually add except just to reassure the commission that, um, the conditional use land use decision is not actually dependent on, um, staff or the applicant proving that they are in compliance with all other regulatory schemes that may apply to the site. Um, DEQ is a state level agency. Um, obligations to comply with DEQ standards as applicable um, will be in place regardless of what the planning commission decision is here tonight. And the planning commission is not required to make findings related to, uh, under the approval criteria that explicitly address, uh, DEQ.
Uh, uh, yeah, I understand. Maybe I worded my question wrong then. And, and I should have said that the insinuation from the report is that the Beaverton Development Code does require um, the applicant to show how they will meet the E Q standards.
Uh, I, I don't, I don't think we would agree with that assertion. What, what the development code requires is that it demonstrate how it complies with the specific approval criteria. And, and those are, those are more broad and probably approval criteria five is the most pertinent one here, and that discusses uh, compatibility with the neighborhood and minimal levels of impact. So that is a pretty, pretty broad set of language here. Um, so there's nothing in development code that insists upon the, the DEQ study being done. Uh, but as Ms. Latinsky said, it is a state level agency and, and compliance is, is required from the state down. Uh, but what we're, we're looking at tonight is, um, compliance with the specific approval criteria of the conditional use permit.
Awesome. Thank you.
Any other commi- Commissioner Lawler, would you like to add?
I'm curious because, um, well, first of all, we oftentimes deal with, um, mitigation between uses. And, um, and so I'm wondering what is on the table as far as, um, things that we can consider. I know the buffering aspects of distance is oftentimes cited. Um, additional vegetation is often, um, a consideration when you are looking at impacts of a use on, in this case, residential properties. Is there anything else that you can think about that, um, is within our purview that maybe we could consider as far as buffering the impacts of noise? That seems to be the, I, uh, of, of all of the issues, I think that one uh, troubles me the most. I don't, you know, I think the traffic has, um, pretty much been, uh, I don't think that's a concern for me, but I do believe the noise impacts. Is there, is there any mechanism that you think is within our purview that we could consider for this application? And hopefully you could understand what I was saying.
At, at, at loud and clear, um, I, I, I would be hesitant to identify specific mitigation methods. What, what I would instead suggest is a, a reminder for the commission um, that any, any conditions of approval either recommended by staff or put upon planning, by planning commission, we really want to tie it to findings. Um, what do we identify it as an issue and how we think that this will actually mitigate it? Um, so we want to make sure that we're not identifying any arbitrary conditions. We want to be very careful to tie any condition to address a deficiency in the land use application. Um, so again, I'm, I, I'm, I'm hesitant to suggest design methods, not an acoustical engineer. Um, but, uh, but I, I would recommend as planning commission, um, consider options that there really is focused on. Um, is there a deficiency in land use application? And if so, would this condition work to resolve that deficiency? Um, sorry, it's not, not more direct, but I think that's the best I can offer at this time.
Well, if, you know, what I'm considering is the criteria for, I don't have the words in front of me, but if essentially livability of the area. And that's, it's a very broad criteria, but I know of a case in my neighborhood where noise was brought up as a factor considering livability. So, um, thoughts, I mean, that to me is the tie-in. And I realize though that we are not acoustical engineers and we did have um, a submittal from an acoustical engineer who didn't really suggest any, any mitigation measures. Um, so I'm kind of again backing up to what we have used traditionally in the past. You know, fencing, um, distance, plantings. Those, those are things that, um, come to my mind as far as mitigation. Um, anyway, I, that's, that's my, that's what I'm grappling with.
Com- completely understood. Um, uh, Commissioner Lawler, I, I might offer up a suggestion, um, uh, a- after we're done tackling this topic and then if any other commissioners have questions for me. Um, I would recommend that, um, uh, wrap up my final comments. Steve City Attorney has any comments? And then I might suggest we, we might take a recess. Um, this would give an opportunity um, for the applicant team and staff to talk about what, what they've heard tonight. Um, before we get into deliberations, um, uh, maybe just a ten minute recess to just kind of talk about where things are going tonight. Uh, so if commission is open to that, I would say I'm happy to answer any more questions regarding my final comments and then following, uh, Ms. McIntyre's comments from City Attorney, that we might take a ten minute recess.
That sounds, uh, like a wise idea to me, Mr. Regner. Ms. McInt- McIntyre, would you like to add into the conversation?
I have no, no comments at the moment, but, um, maybe we should, uh, finish hearing from, uh, Commissioner Adams before we take the recess. Or Commissioner Lawler, are you?
Commissioner Adams, you're holding up the process. You wanted to say anything?
I, I do know I want to hold up the process. I have no questions at this time.
All right, tonight, right now it's eight forty-four. If staff would like ten minutes, let's round it up to nine forty-five, or nine fifty-five, eight fifty-five, Jesus.
Oh, I thought it was much later than it was. Who gave me a hard time? Okay, uh, ten minutes. Thank, thank you, commissioners.
All right.
And once we know that we have our staff team back, um, Steve will kind of restart with our, uh, staff, um, recommendations.
Well, we're glad you're back.
We, we are happy to be back as well and we apologize for the, uh, longer recess than anticipated as well as the technical staff who. Um, I see one city staff member missing as well as one member of the applicant team. So, um, uh, request to give them another thirty seconds or so before, um, staff provides an updated recommendation. So, um, just one second, please. uh, request to give them another 30 seconds or so before, um, staff provides an updated recommendation. So, um, just one second, please. To start, but if, if Anna and Robyn, if you think it's better, we wait for the second member of the applicant team to, uh, hop back on, we can certainly wait.
Uh, Daniel, is it okay with you if we go ahead and move forward?
Yes, please proceed.
Thank you, Daniel. Um, again, uh, good evening, Commissioners, Steve Regner, City Beaverton. Again, I want to extend our apologies for both the technical difficulties as well as the prolonged recess. Um, turns out that nine o'clock, um, comment was more accurate than we realized. Um, uh, update from staff based on both the, the technical challenges we've received and probably the inability for some members of the public to rejoin, um, as well as based on, um, some of the feedback that the applicant and staff have heard from Planning Commission concerns. Um, staff is actually recommending that we continue the hearing at this point, um, to a date certain of October 23rd. Um, the hearing would remain open. We would, we recommend not close the hearing now. This would allow for, um, additional, uh, uh, e- evidence to be submitted to the record as well as, uh, verbal testimony on the 23rd. Uh, so that is a staff suggestion at this time.
Fine.
So we would be looking for a motion from the Commission?
That would be Commissioner Lawler.
Okay, and I will turn my camera off to make sure that you can hear me. I move that we continue uh, consideration of case file LU32023-00557, the Ash Creek Play School. Uh, in addition, application CU32023-00555 and DR12024-0090 to a date certain of October 23rd. And we will be keeping the record open during the, the interim period.
I have a motion. Do I, do I have a second?
Yep, I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? Commissioner Ellis, did you have something you wanted to add?
Uh, no, I was just saying I'll second that motion. N- n- no discussion on my part.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Do I have, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. It carries unanimously. We will have a reconvention of this planning commission on October 23rd to, to continue deliberation of CU, oh, wow, this motion. I'm not going to get into the details. Those numbers are enough to let me know what they are. That, do you have any other further comments before we close the meeting?
Staff has no additional comments.
Thank you very much to the Commission and all other participants in this, in this meeting.
All right.
Very much so.
If that's it, we'll see you later. And the meeting, meeting is adjourned at 9:18.
Thank you.